All right, we're gonna try and hit it right on the penny, seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this the Granville County Board of Commissioners, Monday, July 1st, 2024 meeting to order. It's our new fiscal year, excited to get that kicked off. So our first order of business tonight is gonna be our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. I'm gonna ask Commissioners of Lotus Jay if he'll please lead us in that.
Would you bow with me, please? Lord, once more than again, Lord, we come with thanks for heart. Lord, we just thank you for waking us up this morning and starting us on our new day, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for blessing to many blessed that you restored fun us down to the present time, Lord. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be able to go through this meeting and whatever said and done be pleasing in your sight. Bless each and every heart that is under the sound of my voice, Lord. Whatever problem or whatever need they need, please don't fail the grant of God, Lord. Lord bless the city and district all over the land and country, Lord. Touch mankind all over the world, Father. Give us more love and more understanding. As we go through this meeting, God our hearts and minds, that when we sit, whatever be said and done be pleasing in your sight, we ask all these blessings I name. Amen. Would you stand for me, please, for the pledge of allegiance?
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Jay. Just wanna, from a housekeeping perspective, we've got a new face up here tonight, our county attorney. It's gonna be Mr. Gary Coines, a squire. He's with Smith Anderson. I'm filling in for Jim Ryan this evening. Jim is with some very, very important clients of his. So we're in the capable hands of a different attorney. Of course, to my left on those, we've got our first full meeting with Karen Evidence. Different faces for y'all. And we are gonna be live streaming this meeting, so we can all go back and watch it. Very excited about that. I'm gonna try my very, very best to try and not be in a race tonight. So we'll see how that goes. Our next item today is our consent agenda. We do, in our minutes, have a typo. Page 34 and 35 of your agenda packet, the borders of a slide, actually have some gibberish, and it should read County of Granville, and then on the bottom it should say May 15th, 2024. I think the computer, when the slides were transferred, picked up some kind of kooky computer thing. So there's one change there. So Commissioners, we've all had an opportunity to read the consent agenda. Those items there this evening. What's the pleasure of the board on those?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the Senate agenda be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion by Commissioners of Lotus Jay, seconded by Commissioner Willaferd to accept the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. As we move forward to our introductions, recognitions, and presentations, we had a little difficulty on scheduling for carts, and they will actually be here later this summer. So we're gonna remove item nine. So I'm gonna call on...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to apologize to...
...field trips every Friday to learn about the county in a more in-depth way. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce our 2024 interns. Praylee Williams, who attends Granville Early College High School, couldn't attend tonight due to a prior engagement, but she's super excited and wanted to send her regrets because she was very sad she couldn't make it. All right, at this time, I'll have our first one come up.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Santiago Barrera. I go to Granville Early College High School. I'm in District 5, and what I most wanted to get out of this internship is to learn more about the county I live in and get more experience in office and work life. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
I'm Madison Martinez Molina. I go to South Granville High School. I'm in District 7, and what I hope to get out of this program is more work experience in the office as well and learning a little bit more about our county. And thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Destiny Harris. I go to Granville Central High School. I live in District 1, and what I look forward to getting out of this program is learning more about this county also and getting used to the work week as I grow up and start working on my own. And thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening. My name is Leah Scott. I attend Henderson Collegiate High School. I live in District 2. I think the experience that I wanna get or already have gotten is knowing much more about the county than I, that I didn't know, and a lot of issues that I didn't know that y'all are discussing and that needs to be resolved. So thank you for this opportunity.
All right, and I just wanted to thank y'all for your partnership and your continuing support of youth development education because it's super important. And I'm excited to watch these ladies grow, and we'll see y'all in August for our final presentation.
Let's get them up again for a quick photo for the paper, if you don't mind. Yeah, you can cut it off. And then if you'll come around, in fact, why don't you come up on the stage, it'll be easier. And the press is seated where it says press. Once you get up here, you'll see where they're at. So I'm super excited for you ladies. This is gonna be an outstanding experience, and I appreciate y'all for rising to the greater challenge and accepting and applying for this leadership role. Perfect, thank you. And welcome. I hope you have a great summer. Okay, so lucky us tonight, nobody signed up for public comments. So that will take us further into our meeting to a social services matter issue. We've got Ms. Toussaint here this evening, and I will let her have the floor. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, everyone, Commissioners, County Manager, and the public. What you have before you is the proposed memorandum of understanding agreement between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Granville County for a period of two years, beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2026. State law requires that all counties enter in an annual written agreement with the state for all social services programs, excluding Medicaid. I, along with the DSS executive leadership team, met with the Granville Department of Social Services Board of Directors to go over the proposed agreement. We discussed agreement specifics related to the responsibilities of the state and the responsibilities of the counties. As you all know, the North Carolina Association of County DSS Directors and top executives within North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services have been in ongoing discussions for several years, and more so within the last four to five months regarding some challenges counties were having meeting specific standards that the state has been requiring of counties and the lack of support and or resources provided by the state in order to meet these standards. And because of these conversations, the DSS Directors Association and the state has come to some resolution to the challenges we presented to the state related to workload standards, changes in state policy and procedures, staff training, and proactive and coordinated communication with counties. The MOU agreement was edited on two separate occasions within the last month, incorporating some of our proposed changes. Also, the state has agreed to form a small work group and to include DSS directors from across the state, including myself, and state personnel to continue addressing the other concerns brought up by the association that was not addressed in the MOU you currently have in front of you. So the DSS Board of Directors and I are recommending that we move forward with the signing of the two-year MOU agreement as required per session law 201741, which includes all of the recommended changes presented by the North Carolina Association of County DSS Directors, and with the understanding that the state will form a work group to include DSS directors and address the continued needs identified by the association that were not addressed in this current MOU agreement. I, as the DSS Director and the DSS Board of Directors, believe that the formation of this work group by the state is a great first step to ensure optimal success in local county governments meeting the state-required performance measures and their continued commitment to providing high-quality service to North Carolina and specifically Granville County associates. And that concludes my presentation and actual overview of the MOU agreement, and we do recommend moving forward with the signing of this agreement if approved by the Commissioners tonight. Questions?
Any questions from Commissioners?
Counsel review?
Yes. No comments. Okay, Commissioners, you've got the recommendation before you to approve a two-year MOU, memorandum of understanding, between the North Carolina DHHS and Granville County as per session law 17-41, as recommended by the DSS Board of Directors and the DSS Director here in Granville.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation.
Second. We've got a motion by Commissioner Kozar, seconded by Commissioner Gooch, to accept our DSS Director's recommendation. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. That will lead us into grant matters. Which is... All right, so our first item is gonna be our Social Services Director, Ms. Kathy May, who's with us this evening. Come up or not, if you would... All right, here she comes. And why don't you get up, if you'll put the green button on your mic, and we'll let you have the floor. And we're here for tonight to approve the approval of a Home and Community Care Block grant funding.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. The Home and Community Care Block Grant is our largest annual funding source. It's made up of federal and state funds with a 10% local match. The grant is funneled to us from the federal and state levels and down through the Regional Area Agency on Aging. This block grant became effective July 1st, 1992, through a North Carolina general statute. Granville County Senior Services is the agency with lead responsibility for planning and coordinating the county funding plan. We developed this funding plan by meeting with our Funding Plan Committee, which I did on May the 20th. We looked closely at the demand for each service and past year's expenditures and distributed the total amount between the services you see on the plan. You have the document that shows the suggested distribution of the $528,504. We don't receive this entire distribution at one time. It's reimbursed after we submit a detailed report at the end of each month. I'm asking for your approval of the funding plan that's in your packet. I just want to take this opportunity to make sure that everyone understands these community-based services are designed to help delay or prevent institutionalization, relieve family caregiver burden, and help prevent elder abuse. If not for these services, many more older adults would have to be placed in nursing homes, and the cost to taxpayers would be much greater. I'm glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, Ms. May.
Hello.
We talked earlier today. Tell a little bit about the home improvement and what it goes to and who it impacts.
With our home improvement money that we receive, we do a ramp program. We utilize very skilled volunteers in the area, and we use our funding to help buy the lumber and materials to build ramps. We build them all over the county. This past fiscal year that just ended, we built 26 ramps from, we had, I was looking today after I talked to Russ, we built several in Rougemont, we built several in Franklinton and Wake Forest with Granville County residents who have those addresses. And we built, we built one in Cornwall. We, we just go all over the county from one end to the other, and it, and with all of our services. And, but he was especially interested in the ramp program, and it just greatly impacts people being able to get out of their homes. People, people sometimes have to call the fire department or 911 to get their loved one out of the house to get to the doctor. So this is, this is so people become prisoners in their homes once they, once they get, sometimes once they get to a certain level. So...
Ms. May, if someone needed that service, could you direct them to how they would go about getting that?
They would just call. Actually, that's one service that I administer myself. So all they need to do is call the senior center in Oxford and ask for me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. May, Kathy, I saw with, I think it's $18,889 that's allocated for that particular program. What does that, how many ramps would that typically do in a...
We typically, I would say on average, we spend about $600 to $700 per ramp. The people, the individuals we build them for are given the opportunity to make a donation toward the cost of their ramp. Some are able to, some are not. So we take that into effect. I mean, that, because that, if, if they donate, then obviously it goes to buy more of the same material. So on, on average, we can, and see, this too, this money can be moved around some. If we are running short, and we did run over budget in the ramp program this year, and we were able to slide some from another line item, as long as we don't go over budget for the whole program, we're good.
That was my next question, is if that runs short, do you have funds available from other areas? So you just answered it.
We do. And sometimes after, after the end of the fiscal year, we actually get additional funds from other counties that did not spend theirs.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. May, just like to say, I'm very much aware of so many people who the in-home aid service helps and just a wonderful, much-needed service, and have heard so many wonderful comments about the spirit in which so many of the people do their work. Just very happy to know we have that service.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have the recommendation of our Senior Services Director for approval of the distribution of fiscal year 2425 Home and Community Care Block Grant in the amount of $528,504 with a required county match of $58,722, as shown in the attached funding pages. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we approve. The recommendation come from Ms. May.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jay, seconded by Commissioner May, to accept our Senior Services Director's recommendation. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is to, we've got Carl Thornton, our Assistant Planning Director here this evening. Good evening. And he is gonna walk us through the approval of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Mini Recreation Grant Program.
Good evening. So, as stated, I'm Assistant Plan Director, and I am doing this on behalf of the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Committee, or PGRAC for short, and they're requesting funding for Recreation Mini Grants, so FY 2425. The purpose of this, of the Mini Grants are to help invest into recreation around Granville County. Each project can be awarded a max of $25,000. And that's, in a nutshell, what is going on. Before I get into the new requested projects, I'd like to give updates on the projects from last year. So there was four projects from last year. Town of Stovall, Town of Butner, City of Creedmoor, and Treasure of Joy. Town of Stovall requested and was awarded $6,263 to fund, to purchase public picnic tables and benches, and the project was completed the spring of this year. Butner requested and was awarded $15,000 to install shade structures over the playground at the BAP, and it was completed December of last year. City of Creedmoor was awarded $7,925.40 to install vinyl fencing and the purchase of soccer goals, and it was completed September of last year. And lastly, the nonprofit Treasure of Joy, they was awarded $9,607 to be used to create a trail, including pocket park, community garden, and plantings. The process is still continuing. I spoke with their representative, and they said they will have completed their project this month. They were having their last volunteer session, and they will provide me with the final quarterly report. So for this fiscal year, we have seven projects that are being requested to be funded, which totals $101,783.11. Town of Butner is requesting $9,815 to purchase picnic tables to be placed at the BAP, as you can see on the pictures, the location. And the purpose of this is to help businesses relax during games that, games that are there. They can enjoy meals on the picnic tables as well. The Town of Butner, hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, Butner Association, Community Association, they're requesting $13,225 to have benches placed in and around Butner, so walkers or anybody that's exercising can relax and take a seat whenever they get tired. They have a place to just relax and gather themselves. Toller Community Reachout Club, they're requesting $25,000 to improve their playground, to improve their shelter, and to pave the entrance driveway to the park, which is used to the, uses used for the community at large in the Oak Hill area, but of course, any visitors can utilize the park. The City of Creedmoor is requesting $15,124 for a new bench swing and 11 new plastic benches that aid in sustainability in the area at Lake Rogers. The City of Oxford is requesting $25,000 for a courtesy dock and a kayak launch, which would benefit people with disabilities. It would assist them in using the dock, you know, when needed. And lastly, the Town of STEM is requesting $13,619 for the installation of new park equipment, which will also be ADA compliant, and just to improve the parking general with rubber mulch, park benches, and things of that sort. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Were these all the requests, or were there some that we were not able to fund, or...
This was all the requests that the committee wanted. Every project that was presented to the committee or the committee wanted, they asked to be funded, full amount.
There were no requests that came in that we did not fund or have funds available to...
From last year?
This year, this year.
Oh, from my understanding, I think we had a fundings, based on what I saw in the budget, I guess.
So Commissioner Hinman and I serve as ex officios on the Recreation Advisory Committee, and as you know, we keep a pretty close eye on the penny. And all the projects that were applied for this year are gonna be funded. And there was some discussion around a metric that took a lot of staff time and energy, but I think when the end of the day came in, the committee felt as though these projects are in the outlying areas of the county, and it's why the Recreation Advisory Committee was set up in the first place, was to help us articulate where we feel the funding should go to. Okay, and I know as we move forward, Commissioner Jay, you are actively involved in the Toller Community Outreach Club. So with that being said, Mr. Attorney, can he vote still with us all being, knowing that he's actively involved in our organization or gonna be receiving funding, or should he just bow out?
I'm a child of board member.
Probably best practice to recuse himself on that particular one, and maybe certainly can proceed on the, on the other grants, but maybe we can do a separate motion where he just recuses on that one.
I think that would be appropriate. And again, you know, thank you for your active involvement in that Toller Outreach Community, but I wanna make sure that we're, you know, fully above board and that this organization here knows that you are a member of that. So rather than take it as a slate, I think we'll hold, we'll vote the entire slate except for the Toller Outreach Community Club first, if there's a motion in that regard.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Here, we've got a motion and seconded by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Hinman, seconded by Commissioner Kozar, to accept our Planning Director's recommendation and that of the Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Committee to fully fund the Town of Butner, the Butner Community Association, the City of Creedmoor, the City of Oxford, and the Town of STEM for the recreational projects for fiscal year 2425. And any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, now we'll take a motion on the Toller Community Outreach Club.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we fund the Toller Outreach Grant for the amount of $25,000.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Willaferd, seconded by Commissioner Hinman, to fully fund the Toller Community Outreach Club, $25,000 for their Recreation Mini Grant for the year 2425. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, we've got an economic development matter that is gonna come before us. So this evening, we've got Joe Stallings coming forward, and this is to approve of a consulting contract renewal. And I'll let you take it away. Joe, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Great to be before you this evening. Tonight's action is to consider the renewal of a contract with Hardigan Management. Hardigan Management, and David Hardigan in particular, has been assisting Granville County since December of '23 with the implementation and administration of certain economic development incentive contracts through the Department of Commerce. This extension... This extension would allow Mr. Hardigan to continue his work through the end of January of 2025, and I would ask that the Commission extend his contract as he is performing an invaluable service to myself and the department at this moment.
Do you have any, members have any questions?
I just, I just have one question, what's the, what's the amount?
Not to exceed $15,000 for the entire period.
I make a motion we approve as, as recommended.
I'll second.
Hey, we've got a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Wilford, that we approve the request from our Economic Development Director, Mr. Stallings, to extend the Hardigan Consulting Services through 2025. And we get with the county attorney to finalize the contract and the county manager to execute the contract in that form. So all the, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Joe. That'll bring us up to appointments this evening. Okay, the first appointment we've got is the Granville County Planning Board. This is to make appointments or reappointments to the Granville County Planning Board. The term of Evelyn Mangum, District Three, and Michael O'Brien, Michael O'Brien Turner, District Six, expire January 1st, 2024. So they are eligible to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Elvin Mangum to District Three for this, for the County Planning Board.
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hinman, seconded by Commissioner Cozart to reappoint Elvin Mangum to the Planning Board. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Mr. Vice Chairman, will you take over the next?
Yes, thank you. The term of Michael Turner, District Six, expired July 1st, 2024. Do you have an, do you have an appointment for that slot?
I'll motion that Michael Turner be reappointed to that seat.
We have a motion for Michael Turner to be reappointed, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, eyes have it, motion carries, turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Next, we've got the Granville Vance District Board of Health, and I see our Director here this evening, greetings. Thank you for coming out tonight. So this is to make an appointment at large member for the Granville Vance District Board of Health. And Dr. Peter Johnson, at large, appointed by District Five, has resigned and needs to be replaced. Do we have anyone for that?
I have no one, I know that it's at a large, so the board can be looking for someone that meets those qualifications countywide.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to ask on behalf of Commissioner Hinman if there is any recommendation from our Health Director, Ms. Harrison?
Not at this time, we don't have any names to bring forward, but any partnership with local hospital and economic development are always welcome.
Okay, so let's use this opportunity to put it out there. If anyone would like to serve on one of our boards and commissions, they just need to email the clerk to the board, and she will, or find the request for appointment on our county website, and you can apply. We've got 20 some odd boards and commissions that need wonderful volunteers to move forward on those. So our next appointment tonight is the Granville County Fire Commission, to make appointments and reappointments to the Granville County Fire Commission. The terms of Leon Anderson, who's the Northern Region Citizen at Large, Matt Norwood, Central Region Subject Matter Expert in Fire and Emergency Services, and Richard Jonathan Hayes, Southern Regional. All right, have we got a small correction here, apparently. The Jonathan Hayes, it's not Richard, but just Jonathan Hayes for the Southern End Regional, Southern End Regional Citizen at Large expire in July of 2024. Do we have any recommendations? Why don't we take it north first, there are recommendations for the Northern End.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Leroy Emerson for the North Region Citizen at Large.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zalotis Jay, seconded by Commissioner Wildbauer for to reappoint Leon Anderson for the Northern Region Citizen at Large seat. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, so next we'll have the Central Region, we should have done this way in the first place. We've got Subject Matter Expert in Fire and Emergency Services, Matt Norwood.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Norwood.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Jay to reappoint Matt Norwood to the Central Region Service on the Fire Commission. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and motion carries. All right, and finally, we've got the Southern End Jonathan Hayes, Citizen at Large, expiring in July of 2024.
I make a motion we approve, Mr. Hayes.
I'll second.
We've got, we've got a motion, override the audience, we've got a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Wilford to reappoint Jonathan Hayes for the Southern Region Citizen at Large. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and motion carries. Okay, next we've got the Butner Planning Board ETJ member. So, you're good. And I guess we'll just turn it over to District Seven. If you've got a Mike Arlington, Granville County Appointed to the Butner Planning Board as an ETJ member, resigned in January '23.
Yes, and I'd like to nominate Bob Fulkish to replace Mr. Arrington.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner Wilford to appoint Bob Fulkish to serve as the ETJ member for the Butner Planning Board. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, now we've got a selective voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. This is the 117th Annual Conference in Forsyth County, and we need to select a voting delegate. So who's, who's going to be attending this year? So we know. Okay, so all those people, their hands up, a volunteer, are there any motions from the board?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Commissioner Hinman.
Second motion.
Right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wilford, seconded by Commissioner Cozart to nominate and select Commissioner Hinman as our voting delegate to the NCACC Annual Convention this year. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and motion carries. And that'll take us into our County Managers Report section of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, have four items tonight, the first of which is introduction of the results of the initial RFP for the use of opioid settlement funds. And I would like to invite our Public Information Officer, Terry Hobgood, Granville Vance Public Health Director, Lisa Harrison, and our new opioid settlement coordinator, Kathy Haslett, I hope I pronounced that correctly, to come down and provide some additional information on this matter.
Well, thank you for the reminder. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of County Commissioners, it's lovely to be with you all this evening. Thank you for the invitation to introduce our new Program Manager of Substance Use Prevention and Treatment, and the person who's going to help us with all the technical assistance evaluation and all things wonderful about our opioid settlement funds that we'll be managing over the course of the next 15 or so years. No pressure there, Kathy. Longevity, right? So Kathy Haslett is with us, she has moved here from Connecticut to North Carolina, long time coming, and a plan of hers for a while to be closer to children and family. She has had a lot of experience in collaborations and in coordinating different groups that have been working on prevention of substance use and collaboration around the treatment and the loxine distribution. This is not new work to her. It's also a passion point for her, and it is something that she's well experienced in. She has her Masters in Public Health and a good 20 years' experience doing the work that we have hired her to do here in Granville County. She's already become a member of this community, and I'll let you say hello, Kathy, so glad you're with us. And then we'll turn it over to Terry to tell the group a little bit more about the decisions that have been made, but want to make sure that you understand that Kathy's here to make sure that we provide the technical assistance and the evaluation services that will be needed as we usher our first year of programming through the years ahead.
Thank you so very much for this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm very excited about this position and thrilled with this opportunity. I've been spending the past month or so getting myself known in the community, meeting with behavioral health and substance use treatment providers, meeting with law enforcement, hoping to meet with schools, and getting to know other community providers, social service organizations. So it takes a village to address this issue, it takes all of us working together, and I'm really excited about this opportunity and look forward to reporting back to you at some point in the near future. Thank you so much.
All right, so we're going to have Ms. Haslett very busy to get started, assuming these items are approved tonight. So the Opioid Advisory Committee recently conducted an RFPs process, and we received three proposals. Each proposal was evaluated based on their proposed budget, performance evaluation methods, alignments with strategies prioritized during the OAC's public input work, and their effectiveness in combating the opioid epidemic. The OAC recommended two proposals for funding, one from the Granville County Sheriff's Office and one from Granville Health System. The Sheriff's Office proposal is to combat the opioid epidemic through medicated assisted treatment in the detention center for detainees currently experiencing opioid use disorder. Medicated assisted treatment is an evidence-based strategy that's been proven to save lives by providing a critical service to a high-risk and hard-to-reach population through medication, therapy, and counseling. For the first year, the Sheriff's Office has requested $196,593 to carry out the program that will fund a social worker and administrative assistant in the detention center. Granville Health System has proposed a post overdose response team, also known as a PORT. PORT is another evidence-based strategy proven to save lives and will provide resources to individuals who have recently experienced an overdose with the goal of preventing a future overdose. For the first year, Granville Health System requested $293,000 in funding to carry out their, to carry out their proposal, and that would include funding for a community paramedic and a social worker. The OAC formally recommended that the Board of Commissioners allocate first-year funding for these two programs when they last met in May of 2024. Each recipient will receive technical assistance in formalizing a service delivery model and performance evaluation criteria via county administration staff, Ms. Haslett, and Granville Vance Public Health Staff. The attached resolution opened up for consideration tonight has been reviewed by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners opioid settlement and technical assistance team, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, hey Terry, good evening. So the first year is that for the MAT, does that include all the medications?
I'm not 100% sure on that, I'd have to go back and look at the full proposal. Do you recall, happen to recall in their proposal if that was included?
I believe some of the medications are included, and there is additional medication included in a separate grant for the JL, so I believe those medications are covered either in this funding or another source of funding.
So we can assume, and you'll ensure, that if we start the program, that it will have that funding, will cover that cost for the medication. The other, the other issue is that, so from my reading that the MAT program requires extensive behavioral therapy and psychotherapy, and so, and it starts while they are, individual is incarcerated. What happens when they're no longer incarcerated?
So I speak to that a little bit, I'll ask Lisa to step in. I believe part of the process is to connect them to care once they are released, and if you want to speak more to that.
And, and, and Mr. Director, the question would be, they get the treatment, it's paid for by county services through this, through the opioid settlement, who pays for that service once they leave the detention center?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I appreciate the concern that you want to have continuity of care. I think one of the main concerns we have is when people leave the detention facility, their chances of overdose are at their highest, so we want that continuity of care to be continued. There, there are a number of answers. So one thing that we're working on policy-wise statewide right now is the reinstitution of Medicaid for those who qualify for Medicaid and might have had their Medicaid suspended. Medicaid covers all of the ancillary services around medication for opioid use disorder, and so as soon as Medicaid is reinstated, the policy that is being worked on now at the state level is that that can be reinstated up to 120 days prior to reentry into community so that there is no lapse, and that people who might have had that Medicaid stopped completely, not just suspended, but dismissed, can have that start again before they are able to reenter the community, if that's appropriate. So that's one answer, but that's only for people who are eligible for Medicaid. So people who have private insurance, or people who are self-pay, and people who have other means to be able to have medication for opioid use disorder upon reentry into community, lots of different pathways to that. We will need to have a case manager or a social worker help them with that, and the proposal from the detention facility includes that care manager to help with that, which is the positive thing about that proposal.
So if I understand it correctly, it then will be the obligation of, or assumed obligation of the detention center to have those individuals, if, if all the legislation goes as, as we hope it will, to have those individuals enrolled back into Medicaid prior to their departure, and then the source, social worker that this funding is funding will also be the same individual tracking, or that mechanism to track the individual once they leave the detention center.
That's the opportunity for that person, I don't think it's the obligation. I think the opportunity is to make sure that people get the services they need once they leave.
I know how important the services, and the reason I ask this question is, I'm concerned that we're investing a large amount of money into a service that, that will provide needed benefit, but once the individual leaves the facility, then what? And do we, have we really? but once the individual leaves the facility, then what? And do we, have we really built, has this proposal truly built around the guardrails that we need to make sure that continuity of care continues, and does that have sufficient funding? Inside of the opioid settlement, not another encumbered cost back to, and then, it's not important. It's hugely important. But we're not incurring another cost that we're not predicting. These all should be predictable costs that we should be able to know that will occur. So that's my concern.
Those are good concerns, and I think that, you know, this is the first year of our programming, and so those concerns are absolutely appropriate to bring forward so that we can address them. We do have opportunities in this first year to make recommendations in the region, not just in Granville County, but as you're familiar with already, because you attend the Stepping Up Initiative meetings, we have a five-county region that tries to come together and figure out some best practices. And so we're trying to figure out both diversion on the front end and treatment while people are in detention, and then best practice to continuity of care after detention and in reentry. And we have lots and lots of good charts and graphs to figure out, all right, what's going to be the best opportunity to get people the best care so we see the least amount of death and destruction to life? So I think you're bringing up some really good questions we need to work on.
And one last comment, Madam Director. The argument's often been that you're replacing a drug for a drug. And so I've read the underlying information, so I'd like for you, if you could, just educate the one that believes that that's what we're doing, because the reality of it is, is that there's a lot more to it than that. So if you could touch on that to emphasize that, in essence, what we're trying to prevent, and why that is really not a correct statement.
It's a hard thing. Well, thank you for that question. It's a really difficult thing. Any addiction, and especially opioid addiction, is a tough thing to get through, and different humans have different reactions to different opportunities to get through it. Some people can lean on spirituality, some people can lean on opportunities to work with their physician, to look at evidence-based approaches like medication and therapy that can help them through it. Some people can do a 12-step program and find that really helpful. Lots of people respond differently to things that will work for them. And so I think the appropriate answer that I've always given folks is, whatever pathway works for you to get through to the other side is the right pathway, then let's help you find that pathway. But what we know to be true is that the longer people are addicted to opioids, the more brain chemistry changes. And so it's just really, really, really hard to get that brain chemistry back online without some sense of help from a medication that gets that brain back online a little bit faster with a little more help. So just like people with other chronic diseases like diabetes, like obesity, we're learning a lot of interventions that our medical interventions can just help you get back on track a little faster. Doesn't make you weaker. It doesn't make you less effective at getting through to the other side. It just helps. And so I think what we want is for people to have the best possible chance of living, the best possible chance of recovering, and if that takes, you know, a medication to get them there, then we need to help them with that. So what we've figured out is that it can take different types of medications. Suboxone is one type, methadone is another type, VIVITROL is another type. We have multiple types of medications, and many people now are really interested in weight loss medications. So they hear often advertised on television that you have Wegovy, or you have Ozempic, or you have, you know, new medications to help you with weight loss. It's not totally dissimilar. You have choices of different opportunities to just get you started so that your body can figure something out to get you where you want to be a little faster. It's not totally dissimilar. It's a little, it's a little bit similar. And so, one of the things we're trying to do is make sure people know what the medications are, know how their body can react to those medications, and what works best for them, and then get that other help that they might need around counseling, whether that's individual counseling or group counseling. We offer both of those at the Health Department with medication for opioid use disorder. So there are lots of options for people. We want the choice that's right for that individual, and it depends a lot on what type of drug they've had, how long they've had a drug, or been exposed to that drug, and we want them to have the best chance of recovery possible.
I have one final question, Mr. Chair. May I? Director, do you know what the percentage of our inmates are addicted to opioids? And if so, the, I know there's been a lot of work by the opioid committee on this, so I'm not questioning the, what's going on to get us to this point, and Terry's done a marvelous job, so please don't take it in that regard. But my concern is, one social worker? So are we really, are we placing ourselves in a position with something that's going to create for us salmon swimming upstream off the bat, or are we doing this so that we can just see how we can model to make sure that we have the right combination? Thank you.
Well, to your first question about data, the Stepping Up Initiative has employed Dr. Darren Coy out of Durham, who is a psychiatrist, who's helped, psychologist, excuse me, psychologist, who's helped us collect some of the data at intake from each of our detention facilities in the five-county region. Now, the challenge with the data is that the intake data are self-report. And so it's whatever people tell us about their habits or about their needs to see Dr. Coy, or about what they're currently being treated for. So some of that data is correct, and some of that data, we find out later, is maybe underreported, right? So we know there are about a third of our detention facility inmates who report that they have an addiction to either an opioid or some co-occurring substance. But once we get them in the detention facility, we know that that's a higher percentage than what they report. And what we're trying to dig into in the Stepping Up Initiative is a better piece of data for us to know about that. The other thing that you're mentioning with a social worker, you know, is that going to be effective? Is that going to be helpful? I think that's a wonderful starting place. I think that's a good place to just get us rolling, to figure out, is that going to be a solution to work with Southern Health Partners, our medical staff in the detention facility, to really make a difference into referrals and make sure that the detention facility has the staff they need to get people where they need to get the treatment they need? Yes. Yeah, well, thank you for your interest, and thank you for the leadership of those of you. I know Commissioner Gooch has been very, very helpful in figuring out a lot of the work of the opioid advisory committee and Commissioner Karen. We really appreciate all of the work the opioid advisory committee has done to get to this point. It's been a lot of meetings and a few years of hard work to get here, so really, thank you.
Yeah. My question, Commissioner May, you know, when he asked you about, when I take me into detention center and treat me for opiate, and you find what type of medicine I need to cure me, well, not cure me, get me better, get me back on the right track. So after you treat me, and I leave the detention center, are there programs going to be out there to help me to stay on track?
Yes, sir.
Or do I have to come back, or do I have to, next thing I know, you don't treat me for six months, then next thing you know, I'm back to the table, starting all over again?
We have, we work very closely with VIA, our managed care organization, and they have a series of options for people. So whichever options people choose after they leave the detention facility, and whichever insurances people have available to them, there are lots of options that people can continue their treatment. The Health Department is one of those options where they can continue their treatment. We don't have all the things we wish we did have in the way of treatment, and I think these opioid settlement funds in the future could fill some gaps. So once after this first year of funding, we figure out, oh, we've got three of the five things that people need, but we're missing two, we could decide as the opioid advisory committee and as a county that we need to invest some more money in two of the things that people need that we don't have enough of. We don't know a lot of those things quite yet, and that's part of what we're going to find out in this first year.
And nine times out of 10, those peoples don't have insurance.
That's the tough part, yes.
And do we, are we still going to turn them loose, or are we going to still try to find a way to help them out?
Absolutely. There are programs for the uninsured as well, and VIA, and the Health Department, and the hospital, and other places that serve people with opioid use disorder, do have funds from the state to help the uninsured. Sometimes those funds run out, and so we've got to figure out, how much of that are we going to need to access? How much of the new policy to get people back restored into Medicaid is going to help them get treatment with those providers that offer treatment with Medicaid, and how much of those folks might have access to private insurance once they get back out? Those are questions we don't know the answer to yet, but I think the care manager, the social worker, that is one piece of the puzzle we can help figure out with that role. So I think it's a great proposal for year one. There are a lot of good questions we're going to keep having, and that we're going to have to find the answers to. But the combination of having the Stepping Up Initiative, having Kathy with us now, and knowing that we're on a multiple-year journey together, I think will give people a lot of hope.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also wanted to mention that we've had some, this is not the last time that commissioners will see these programs. There will be grant agreements that will come back to you all for approval, that will have a lot more information about kind of workload and outcome metrics that we will judge these effectively one-year trials by. So I think we'll be upfront about what criteria we'll look at to determine, you know, whether these efforts are deemed to have been successful or not. And I'll just speak for myself that that will make me feel a lot more comfortable about kind of what we're diving into, because it's hard to know in advance what is going to work best in these kinds of situations.
I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me, Terry. I keep needing to push the green button. The memorandum of agreement between the state and the county is very specific for Kathy's role to be able to hold these entities we're giving money to accountable to what the state is saying we have to perform to. So there's really no question that we will be following them carefully and holding them to that MOA, that memorandum of agreement that the state says we will be following for the annual impact report. And Kathy's already been to one training of the collaborative for those evaluators, and will go to many more to make sure we're following those rules carefully.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
I'll try. So will there be someone that can help people get ahold of DSS to get on Medicaid?
I think that care manager is the perfect person to be, the social worker in the detention, there was actually a lot of talk, should that detention facility care manager be someone shared with the DSS group? And the answer was no, it needs to be separate and apart from DSS. But that will definitely be sort of a fast-track connection point, for sure.
Seeing some head shake with my DSS partner up there. So, yes, so.
We'll fast-track. And your DSS partner up there attends Stepping Up Initiative, and so she knows well what we're talking about with the connection and the detention facilities, too.
I just wanted to make sure that there was a connection. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. We've got the recommendation before you from the opioid advisory committee, which is chaired by our own Commissioner Jimmy Gooch, and the county manager to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the resolution to direct the expenditure of opiate settlement funding in the amount of $489,539 to provide initial funding for the programs implemented by the Granville County Sheriff's Office and the Granville Health System to combat the opiate epidemic upon final completion review by the county attorney.
Make a motion we approve as recommended.
Second. We've got a motion by Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Wilford, to approve the recommendation. Are any questions on the motion? Seeing none?
Well, I do have one. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, this money is from the opioid settlement. It's not from the county funds. It's from the opiate settlement. Okay.
Very good point. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. We will turn it back over to Drew for a review of the proposed revisions to the Granville County Advisory Board Guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just briefly introduce this item and then hand this off to Clerk to the Board, Karen Evans. As somebody mentioned earlier, it might have been you, Mr. Chair, the county has nearly 30 advisory boards and commissions. A third of them were created here locally, as opposed to being created by the state or some other outside entity. So about a third of them, about 10 of them, we create the bylaws and the appointment guidelines and so forth for these 10 boards, which we're calling community advisory boards. And over time, the practices for appointing and term limits and so on for these boards had gotten very disparate. There are lots of different things going on for all these boards, and so we thought it was a good practice to review all of those and to come back with some revised policies and guidelines that would apply to all 10 of these community advisory boards. And Ms. Evans has been very helpful in helping to finalize those proposals. You all have been briefed on those. But for your further edification and for the edification of the public watching the meeting, I will let Ms. Evans run through an overview of these changes.
Thank you very much. Yes, as stated, we do have over 20 boards. By my count, we have 28 boards. The boards that we are primarily be affected here, we're calling community advisory boards, to kind of separate them from boards that require like subject matter expertise. So we're not talking about the fire commission, or, and not boards that require a sworn oath, so not, we're not talking about the social services board. There's a list there of the 10 boards that we are talking about specifically when we address these guidelines. As Mr. Cummings said, we do have guidelines in place. They date back to 1985. There have been several revisions. The last revisions were 2003. So it's just time to really update that. As a clerk, we have to keep track of appointments and term limits, so it's, and membership, so it's very helpful, or would be very helpful to have some consistency there. So the main two key change, well, there are two key important changes I want to highlight, and then we'll just go through a few of the others. But the main one is term limits. In the guidelines now, they read 10 years. We would like to change that to 10 years. We'll leave it at 10 years, but also add no more than three full terms. And most of the time, a full term, especially for the people that will probably be affected by this, once it goes into place, if and when it goes into a place, would be a three-year term. There are times where a person may be appointed to a partial term, so someone may resign, and they haven't completed their term, and so someone may be appointed. So there's still possibility there that even if someone served three full three-year terms, they might reach a 10-year mark, because they might have come in at a, filling an unexpired term. But the main point would be, the main change, I think, would be adding the three-year term limits, the three-year term limits. And with that, there is a provision that if this goes into place, that anybody who would be affected by that would be, and would be eligible for reappointment by way, the board could waive one additional term. So it would not necessarily be that if it went into effect, you know, the next month or two, that everybody would simply just come off because they're over 10 years. It would be that if they're eligible, they would be eligible for reappointment. Whoever's currently serving would be eligible to serve one additional three-year term. Mr. Cummings and I did meet with the Human Relations Council, because they're one of the more, the bigger boards. They have over 20 members, and we talked with them, because we know. we know they would be most affected, and they have a lot of longstanding, long-serving members, some for more than two decades. So we did talk with them, and so in that board in particular, we have people that would come do, let's see, come off that board. Typically, their next term would expire 25 or 26, but they would be eligible for reappointment, and if they were reappointed, the board could waive, and they could have one additional term that would push them out to 28 or 29. And that would help, because we do want to make sure that people have seats, that there are seats available for people to serve, so that when people come off, there's place, there are seats so that people can serve. But also, we want time to spread awareness in the community that these seats are available, and reach out to different generations of people to show them what the opportunities are, and encourage more and more people to apply. So that, waiving that additional term will be helpful in that respect. The other major change would be attendance. So right now, we have an attendance policy, and we've just tweaked it a little bit to add that if you miss more than half of your board meetings, starting from the first meeting after your appointment, you consider to have vacated your seat, but it would still remain in the policy that it would be the chair's responsibility, the chair of that board, to inform the board of commissioners that that seat is vacated. So that would be just a small addition, making sure that there is more opportunity, again, for people to serve. We do have people sitting on the seats, and things come up, so it is written in the provision that if you notify the chair, that's different. You can notify the chair of your absence, that's different, but if you are repeatedly missing and not notifying the chair, then the chair can let the board of commissioners know that your seat is considered vacated. Those are the two major changes. If you, and you'll see that in the red line draft, but if you look at the summary chart, a lot of the, a lot of, we're calling that revisions, mostly because those sections are not in the original resolution guidelines. The sections one and two are the red line draft, but section three, that is the additional section that has been added. That section specifically relates to the 10 boards that you see on your screen, the 10 advisory boards. Mostly what it does, it defines what an at-large member is, the person who does not represent a specific district. It defines what an ex officio member is, someone who has a role within Granville County government, or an affiliated organization with Granville County government, and defines that those seats are at-large seats, excuse me, that those two seats, the at-large and the ex officio are voting seats. And it defines that commissioner and staff liaisons are non-voting seats. It does specify that there's, a standard term is three years. It makes a provision, this is important, for members, if you have met the term limit, you can be eligible for reappointment after a six-month break if no replacement is found. So it's not just that you've served your 10 years, you're, and you're off the board. If after six months, we truly cannot find another replacement for that board, you are eligible for reappointment after a six-month break. So I would say that's another key, key area. But yes, as clerk, it would be helpful to have some standardization in place so that we can keep track of appointments. We have some boards that are running two-year cycles, we want to get everything on, everyone on a three-year cycle, and we want to set term limits in place, and we want to leave time so that we can spread awareness to the community, so that we can encourage, encourage people to take part in the opportunity to volunteer. That is all I have, so the recommendation is just that this would be not voted on tonight. I do need to still share it with the chairs of all the boards that are going to be affected, and the staff liaisons. I need to send this out via email electronically, but we would like to bring it back before the board in August or September, once the boards that would be affected have had an opportunity to review it and give any feedback that they may have.
You've heard the recommendation that this is for FYI only, and we'll turn it back over to our county manager for the next item.
Thank you. This next item is actually just to, for official board action to make clear a longstanding practice. The ABC Board at the state level had checked in with Granville County about our ABC Board member compensation practices, and they require some documentation of board support in any cases where the chair of the ABC Board receives more than $150 per meeting. In Granville County, it has been longstanding practice, predating, I think, everybody sitting around the table, that the chair receives an additional $1,800 per year. That must have been approved by the board at some point. Deborah looked, and despite her prodigious researching skills, couldn't find where official board action had done that. She believed that it had been an official board action, and so just to be able to provide the appropriate documentation to the state, we decided to bring this matter back before the board and to, for the board to approve this longstanding practice. And I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
All right. No questions from the board?
I got a question. How long do the chairman, chairperson stay? Jim?
Is it the pleasure?
Oh.
Is it the pleasure of the?
ABC Board, right?
Of the, of this board?
Of this board?
Where this board appoints the members that serve.
And then the members that serve elect their own chairman, or?
It's, we've always just kept the chairman in place.
Y'all don't elect a chairman?
We've always, whenever the chairman that's in place is reelected, he remains. That's something we can take a look at.
Okay. It sounds to me, because I don't recall this board appointing chairpeople, so my assumption is that a three-person board of, ABC Board elects its own chair.
We have one of our past chairmans right there in the audience. Mr. Nelson, you were chairman before I was.
And were you? And you were elected by your fellow members? Okay, so I think that makes it clear how that happens.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so this evening, we're going to need a motion to clarify this longstanding practice that the board chairman will receive additional compensation above and beyond the standard board, when this is in accordance with the general statutes. So if we can have a motion in that regard.
I think at this point, I need to recuse myself.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a practice that's in place and through the recommendation, allowing the chair of the ABC Board to receive the $1,800 per year. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Kozart, seconded by Commissioner Jay, and we are allowing Commissioner Wilford to recuse himself from this matter as he serves on the ABC Board, and he did prior to becoming a county commissioner. So any questions on the motion?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Board, as you know, I have a, my religious convictions in regards to my votes regarding the ABC Board, so I don't want anyone to take and view my vote as any disrespect to any member of the ABC Board. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, I know you've got some walk-in items.
Yes, so the first walk-in item is a revision to our personnel policy as it relates to annual pay increases for three positions that do not report directly to this board. That would be the elected sheriff, the elected register of deeds, and the appointed director of the Board of Elections. And we took a crack at this last year, establishing, I think, prior to last year, there had actually been no clear policy about how those pay increases would be approved by this board, although this board has full kind of budgetary authority over all county expenditures. We have reviewed those again this year and tried to refine the way that those pay increases are calculated. I know that that has been communicated out to you all by the county attorney, and so these revisions for the calculation of those pay increases is before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions. You have a, both a red line and a clean version of those revisions in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions about those revisions.
Are there any questions from the board members about the revisions to the policy personnel manual? What's the pleasure of the board on this matter? It is, again, a walk-in item, so it's been presented to you here first thing tonight. I'm actually delighted that we're not just voting on it, that we're actually taking a moment to contemplate. If you have any questions, please pass them on to the manager.
Second page in the Board of, just pick this one out, that the pay of the election director shall be in the amount recommended annually by the County Board of Elections and approved by the Board of Commissioners. Are we simply approving what they recommend and basing, is that, is that, is that what we're doing? We're just simply a mechanism to approve what they are suggesting?
So I have had a lot of conversation with the county attorney about what happens if the Board of County Commissioners somehow comes to a different conclusion than the Board of Elections. I think his recommendation was, were that to happen, that, that some of, some members of each board would get together to discuss further that, the differing opinions on that, and try to come to some conclusion, and then, assuming they could come to some conclusion, that new salary would then be approved by the board.
One last question. Well, I say that, and then there's two more, so.
So the pay of the registered deeds and sheriff, both are elected positions, who are independent to the board, so follows pay increase received, in other words, match the merit of their employees. Hypothetically, just from this process, is, does this board have any means to deviate from that if they so prescribe to do so?
I think this policy is the creation of this board, so if this board ever wanted to modify this policy, perhaps because it felt strongly that it needed a mechanism to come to a different conclusion, it would have the authority to do that. We did have a lot of back and forth about whether it was better to leave this to the discretion of the board, or to try to pin it down in some sensible way, so that there was a, just a clear, automatic methodology to the calculation of those raises, and ended up kind of erring on the side of the latter option, that that was a cleaner way of determining these, and helped preserve, I think, the separation of two different elected offices.
That makes sense. Just, the reason I ask the question, it's not a negative, it's a positive, that, I mean, you may, people be performing at a stellar capacity, did we not want to minimize that at the same time? So thank you, I just, I wanted clarification, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I really like the fact that it somewhat removes the county board from getting to that, I know we have some say, but dealing with these elected officials and it's, I'm more comfortable moving with something like we have here.
Right. It's the citizenry's job to micromanage. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve these recommend, recommendation coming for the board?
I make a motion we approve.
Second motion.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner Kozart, to accept the manager's recommendation in regards to performance review for elected officials.
And other officials not reporting directly to the county manager.
And that. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
And the final walk-in item shouldn't, shouldn't be a surprise. We talked at the beginning of the state's RFP process for the completing access to broadband grant about sort of theoretically what maximum amount of funding was Granville County prepared to commit for its match for this grant program. You all committed informally to a maximum grant match of $2 million, which we communicated to the state, who then ran an RFP, and we have the results of that RFP, and I'm going to invite Karina down to talk you through this resolution, which is simply a more formal action by the board to commit somewhat less than the maximum amount that we talked about before for this grant.
So if you could advance to the next slide. We did have a total of seven proposals. We had four different providers. These providers were pre-qualified by DIT to participate in this process. We had seven proposals, and the DIT also formed an evaluation team, of which your county manager and I participated. We met independently to score the proposals, and then we met collectively to review those scores and to come up with a recommendation. And the evaluation team's recommendation was Roanoke Connect Holdings, primarily because the number of locations they served was higher than all of the other proposals at 1,697. They also had the second lowest cost per location, it was around $3,030 per location. You can see on the map, those locations that were identified by Roanoke Connect Holdings in their project proposal, 893 or 863 of those locations are in areas that were prioritized by the county, and so that ranked fairly high in our, in our process. The total project cost is $5,142,857, of which the county's contribution is $1,800,000. Of that $1,800,000, you have $400,000 approximately available, remaining from your ARPA infrastructure funds that we can utilize, the balance of which, $1.4 million will come from your assigned fund balance, which is currently allocated for recreation and other needs in the southern part of the county. So the resolution before you is to support the selection of Roanoke Connect Holdings and provide the required county contribution for this completing access to broadband program.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
Deputy Director, is the map updated? Do we have an updated map of those actual locations?
I checked this afternoon, and as of this afternoon, DIT still had not updated these. I imagine they're going through, they announced several projects today, so I imagine they're addressing folks who are taking some time to get that site updated. Once they do update the NC1 map, residents will be able to go down, as they can with the other two projects that you approved, drill down at the address level and determine whether their address is within this project.
Hopefully, we'll be in the net, you'll be notified when it's updated.
I'm not sure that I will, but I will continue to check, because we'll want I'm not sure that I will, but I will continue to check, because we'll want to update our website. I know Terry is working on a press release as well. We want to be able to let residents know when they can actually find out if those, one of those green dots is actually their house.
Thank you.
All right, folks, this map looks like it, oh, sorry, it touches all but seven district-wise.
I just wanted to add that early on in this process, I committed on behalf of the organization that we would continue to really aggressively pursue all of the state and federal broadband expansion funds that were available. I think we're continuing to do that. We're tracking these opportunities very carefully and trying to make sure that we're making maximum use of them to make sure that the greatest number of county residents do get connected to high-speed internet as soon as possible.
I'll make a motion that we do need to make this motion correct. I'll make a motion that we approve this, as recommended by Ms. Wykel.
Our second motion, Mr. Chairman, and if I may, just ask Ms. Wykel, there may be something going on with 456 Pieces Chapel Road that been there from Vance County, they've been back on Watkins Road, been there Fairport Road, for some reason, there's a little house they call on 456 Pieces Chapel that they moved from, but I'm sure it'll be included at some point. But it's with enthusiasm that I try to second this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that area is actually being built out by Spectrum as part of their ARDOF award. That's the federal award, that had nothing to do with, with our state or our approval. But they're building out, and they're also connecting to locations with, outside of their ARDOF area, so, good to know. And I would remind you as well, the CAB program targets unserved first and underserved locations, so the selection of the areas has a lot to do with how many of those are eligible for grant monies.
It's off on Sunset Road.
Pardon?
On Sunset Road. I see Spectrum have run, have run Goshen Road and Jack Ecock Road down to the end of Sunset Road, not Sunset Road, Sally White Road, and those folks are underserved. They hardly have anything, so please look into that for me.
Mr. Chairman, I also spoke to somebody this week that they stopped 12 houses short of taking care of that whole road, and they were very upset because their house was a red dot, and they didn't see where they were gonna get it. So I said to speak to you.
Have them send me their address, because I can double-check with DIT. Sometimes the provider may pull out, or the contractors pull out, they may have equipment issues. If they're on the map, the NC-1 map, they are part of the project, so if you have them send me their address and contact information, I can look into that.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Willoughby, seconded by Commissioner Kozart, to accept this new broadband, which is a CAB program grant, and we are gonna be paying $1,800,009 as our match for this program. Any questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Before Ms. Wykel leaves, I'd just like to make a comment. She has been absolutely wonderful in responding back. I've had just numerous citizens in my district and adjoining districts, and she has absolutely responded quickly. We've actually had the directive DIT get back to us, and the citizens have been very, it shows that we're working towards some, some results, so thank you.
You're welcome. One thing also I'd like to mention, there is some legislation out there, we're holding our breath, because they, it's kind of on pause at the moment, but DIT is trying to get the legislators to remove the county match requirement. If that were to occur, they're hoping that, or they would insist, actually, that it would be retroactive for any, for this project or any projects they're awarding through the RFP process. So reach out to our legislators, because that legislation would be very beneficial, obviously, to Granville County, if they either reduced or removed the requirement for county match, because right now, the CAB program requires a 35% county match. 35% from the county, 35% from the state, and 30% from the provider. So we'll keep you posted on that if there's any movement on it. Thank you.
You gotta remember, commissioners, there's the ARDOF grant, there's the Great Grant, now there's the CAB program, all of them have different matching results, or matching requirements, and our staff keeps up with every one of those, so it's quite the mouthful. So, Mr. Manager?
I'll add one more thing to the points you were just making, which is that we had very limited, well, we had no say in sort of the ARDOF award areas, no say in the Great Grant award areas, much of which ended up in the sort of northwestern part of the county, and so it was, it was an explicit goal of ours in this CAB grant Phase 1, to focus on the south and particularly southeastern part of the county. And so one thing that we were looking for was kind of lots of locations, low cost per location, but also, we had communicated our priority areas to the state, and so we were also looking for appropriate match with our priority areas. I'm happy to see, as you can see here, that the sort of southeastern side of the county is well-served by this proposal. And with that, I have no further items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that'll take us to the county attorney's report. Mr. Corners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to be with everyone this evening, no items to report.
Okay, and we've got presentations by board members, and we're gonna be starting, I believe, with District 5 tonight, so Commissioner May?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our planning board met, and they formed a subcommittee. If Mr. Corners could, if I remember that meeting correctly, they did take off that text amendment, if I'm correct? Mr. Baker, the original text amendment, is that been nullified, or?
Correct. It was the text amendment that was brought, was withdrawn by the board.
Right, and so this subcommittee is taking a deeper dive and be working with a number of components to make sure that they do thorough review of the solar farm matter. We've had some inquiries from the city of Creedmore regarding some things that we may or may not be doing for those underprivileged, and particularly in regards to housing and things of that nature. And so a couple inquiries I've made to county manager, and actually, and I'm glad to report some things that we are doing. And one was, I wanted to make sure that we talked about the ramp program from the senior services, because that, what Ms. May didn't say is that largely, many, many of the ramps that were installed actually were within the southern end of county, and so we were glad to hear that. Not that they're not all important, but it's that they're going everywhere within the county. And then there was the EE Community, I think Energy Efficient Community Grant, I talked to Terry about it and county manager. And what we're doing is, it's a consortium of Orange County, Durham County, and Grandma County, and identifying homes of individuals that may not be able to afford it to winterize their homes, and to improve the energy efficiency of their homes, and so that, I think, somewhere around the October timeframe, and they will be out soliciting information, we'll get information and be able to promote it, and so that those people in need of, hopefully, the most needed will get the attention. So it's just one of really important, the folks know that the board and the county office is constantly working toward identifying and working towards the quality of life for all the residents of Grandma County. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner May. Next, we'll have Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you. Well, we heard from the OPO advisory committee tonight, which I'm chair of, and appreciate the opportunity to be there and be part of that. We got a good, good report from our senior services committee that I'm also on, and as far as everything else, seems to be going pretty smooth. I just wanted to wish everybody a safe Fourth of July. Have fun, but stay safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Jay?
Yeah, thank you. Just would like to reiterate and apologize for Cox not being here tonight, but like I said, ran his head surgery last week, and he couldn't get everything squared away, so he looked forward. I talked with him today, he looked forward to being here, and I think it's in September, at our September meeting. Also, just like to, I got a call just before I left home, Ms. Emma Peace Bullock, DOT tore down the sign for Oak Hill, at the corner of Jack Ecock, at Goshen and 96, tore down that sign, when the boards tore down their sign for the museum, and they haven't put it back up yet. So, please, Karen, county manager, talk to DOT about putting that sign back up.
I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And with this said, I'd like to concur, wish you everybody a safe and happy Fourth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay. Commissioner Willoughby?
I had the, excuse me, I had the privilege and honor of presenting proclamation Saturday evening to Cindy Joy, who served as Minister of Music for Oxford Baptist Church for 44 years. And Cindy was much more than a director of music or minister of music, she was a minister to the people in the Oxford Baptist Church. I'm not a member, I'm a Methodist, but she is a, was excellent for the community and for this county. And kudos go out to Karen Evans, our new clerk, and Deborah for helping me put all the information together. But they had a full house, 350 people, there were people that couldn't get in, but it went extremely well, and she will be, she'll be here in the community, but she'll be missed by the Baptist Church. But I do, on behalf of the commissioners, I did present that, and very well received, so everyone was very nice. I'd also like to just welcome Karen, and for your first meeting, and what a great job you did. So I look forward to big things going forward. And I'm gonna be like Commissioner Jay next to me, have a happy and safe July the 4th. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Willoughby. Commissioner Hitman, you want to give it a whirl?
I'll give it a good try. I think I'll pass, though.
I hope your voice returns, Commissioner Hitman. Commissioner Kozart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. I share in your comments, Commissioner Willoughby, I had a chance to be in a number of programs with her and hear about her impact, particularly on the youth in that church over the years, so we do congratulate her on all she's done. Just want to say how much fun it was to be at the Masonic Home, and also, even though a funeral caused me not to be at the Central Children's Home, just two places that are very special in my development. I attended Angerby Duke School on the campus of Central Children's Home, and then went to John Nicholas on the campus of the Oxford Masonic Home, so just so happy that both of those institutions had the chance to have these special programs. And also commendations to Ms. Tucson and her staff. I'm just impressed, she's bringing in some good people there, restructuring some things at the social services, and feeling real good about that. And also, I see Ms. Hayes here from my school board, very thankful to the school system for offering the summer programs for our kids. A lot of the children have been very excited to participate in these, so we're very grateful for that, and thankful that they have these good opportunities for our children during the summer months. And with that said, thank you, and happy Fourth as well, Mr. Chairman to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. I like you, the celebration for St. John's Day that was held for the Masonic Home for Children is outstanding event, and the folks who are there, between the Masons and the Trainers, really do open their hearts and their wallets when it comes to funding that organization. Makes me proud to be a Mason, so Fourth of July holiday, make sure everybody's safe, and want to make sure we re-mention that the Lakehold Firework Celebration will be taking place on July the 3rd, the gates open at 6:30 and close just about dusk for the show at 9:00. It is difficult to get out, but we have patience and love our neighbors, so that'll be a fun event. Again, it's a cosponsored event between the town of Butner, the city of Creedmore, and the town of STEM, as well as Grandma County, so your tax dollars are funding that, and I think we should all get out and enjoy it, fellowship with our neighbors, so. I love the rain that we got the other night, and last year, it rained so hard at the Butner Fireworks that my money in my wallet was wet. Wish it was more than a dollar bill, but that's what it is. So anyways, with that said, I'll leave my remarks, but we have a need for a closed session this evening, but before that, are there any other matters to come before this board?
Mr. Chairman, something I did forget, the funeral for Ms. Sherri Briggs was served on our library board for years, for several years. Her husband, Mike, be funerated Wednesday at 11 o'clock at the Oak Hill Presbyterian Church.
Thank you for that. All right, so we do have a need for a closed session for personnel, which is allowed by General Statute 143-318.1186, so we could have a motion for that?
I'll make that we go into closed session.
Only if we can have a potty break.
We got a motion by Commissioner Willoughby, and seconded by Commissioner Hitman, that we go in an executive session for matter of personnel, and then we take a 10-minute recess before doing so.